Everybody to sit down so we can start this meeting promptly. Cindy, will you read our compliance statement into the record?
This meeting was the intelligent compliance of the Open Public Meetings Act with the annual notice advertised through January 11th, Trenton, which provides us with 110% of that Trenton. Members on the list are the Department of Commerce.
Cindy, I'm going to ask you to pause for a quick second. If you have hearing issues, we actually have hearing and care seating. You're welcome to move up and say hello. Yeah, we're going to really have to shout.
Yeah.
Oh, it's the surfers here. Oh, great. Hey, who is it coming from?
Cindy, would you presume?
Absolutely. Thank you. Meeting agenda was posted on the bulletin board at City Hall and City's website. Meeting agenda provides for action items at the extent known of the time of publication. This meeting will be recorded. And we've reserved seats in front for people who are hearing it there. Do you like a roll call, ma'am? Please. Councilwoman Lambert?
Here.
Councilman Sanders?
Here.
Councilman Stegman?
Here.
Council President Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Fall?
Here.
Can I ask everybody to rise from the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence? Okay. Flag around? Flags over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence to consider those who are fighting in our nation's armed forces and those who are fighting on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll begin tonight by discussing why we're having our meeting in such a beautiful location. But outside, we had a scheduling conflict with the zoning board, which also has a controversial issue on its agenda. We are working on our Green Acres Enabling Resolution this evening. That resolution is due by June 30th. When we noticed for that action, which is a, well, we're applying for a $1.5 million grant as part of our clossom property work. When we noticed, we did not realize that there was a conflict on scheduling between zoning and ourselves. It was too late to renotice because this particular resolution requires a 15-day public notice. We did not realize about the conflict until last Friday. We are, we have a deadline for Green Acres of June 30th. So we are being a little creative this evening in order to ensure that we can apply for a state grant that is, only comes around once a year. So we have removed anything controversial from this agenda. There are no, there's functionally nothing but a resolution for Green Acres, a few cleanup resolutions for, uh, cleanup resolutions for ABC, some zoning cleanup, and a resolution that is also time-sensitive regarding our architects. And that's about it. So we pushed all of the rest of our controversial issues over to July 6th, where we'll be inside and can have a longer meeting. We're going to work diligently to make sure that this meeting, while we'll still have plenty of public participation, that this will be short and easy. So with that, we're going to have our public hearing regarding the Green Acres application. The resolution, this is resolution number 92, 2021, whereas the City of Lambertville desires to further the public interest by obtaining funding in the amount of $1.5 million in the form of a $1.5 million matching grant and from the state for the following projects, the clossom property acquisition to 60 North Main Street at a cost of $2.937 million to the City of Lambertville. So functionally, what we've done here is myself, along with a series of volunteers, been working really diligently over the last six weeks to write this Green Acres grant. This is the grant that will, A, give a significant portion of funds back to the city. It will also allow us to preserve that clossom property, which is what we promised the city we were going to do in perpetuity as open space. So functionally make it undevelopable. So with that, are there any questions from the council regarding this resolution or the grant? Okay, then I'm going to open up for public comment. This is a public hearing, which is required as part of the Green Acres application process. We have to have a public hearing in order to be able to finally submit our full application. If there are any public comments regarding the application for this $1.5 million matching grant, please step forward, state your name, your address, and then make your comment.
Good evening, everybody. Just a real quick question. So if we get this grant. Oh, I'm sorry. Paul Stevens, 39 Quarry. Sorry. If we get this grant, what restrictions then are on that property? And I assume it's only for the, like, the six acres and not the full eight point something? Can you please say a little bit more, just, you know, in perpetuity, what does that mean? We can't do anything up there? Just get a little more information, please.
So as is already available on. You want me to read? So Mr. Stevens has asked us, what does the restriction mean for the property itself? What does in perpetuity mean? And what portion of the property are we restricting from Green Acres? So the map that's available on the city's website regarding clossom property shows an exclusionary zone around the current outbuildings. It's about 6.4 acres of, that's a graph map. It's about 6.4 acres of the land around those buildings. So what's currently green field will continue to be green field. The restrictions from the Green Acres is that no building or use of that property will be outside of what the state deems as public parkland. So functionally, it means that we, the state actually will enforce those lines between what's Green Acres and what's not Green Acres, and that it will be available for public use. And in perpetuity means forever. If somebody were to decide that they wanted to take a chunk of that Green Acres property out, they would have to replace it through a very arduous state process that includes four years of, oh, excuse me, a one to four replacement. So for every one acre that they remove, they have to replace it with four acres of parkland, and that's actually by state and legislative action. Now, again, we have a lot of seats right up front. So if you're having trouble hearing us, I highly recommend that you come up front. And Mr. Stevens, did I miss anything from your question?
No, I just have one follow-up on that. Okay, so for park use, there was a lot of discussion about sledding on the hill. Is that still going to be allowed if that goes?
Yes, that's public, that's public park use.
Okay. I didn't know if there are any restrictions on what park meant for the state activities.
Any other questions or comments for our public hearing for the Green Acres grant? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Can I get a no in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cindy, would you mind if we get a roll call vote for? Oh, actually, I'll need a motion to pass resolution number 92, 2021, which is the grant opportunity for the $1.5 million grant through Green Acres.
So move.
Second.
Can I get a roll call?
Councilwoman Lambert?
Yes.
Councilman Sanders?
Yes.
Councilman Stegman? Council President Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Fall?
Yes.
Okay. We will keep the public updated on what the long-term plan is for that grant and for other grants that we'll be pursuing with the State Historic Trust, with the State Historic Preservation Office, as well as with some private grant funding that we've been working on thus far. We expect over the course of the next six months to have a series of new and upcoming grants for that property to ensure that Lambertville gets as much public funding back as possible.
Do we have any plans on what we're going to do with it after we get this?
I'm sorry, you'll have to wait for public, you'll have to wait for public comment? We've closed public comment on that, so you can wait till the end.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, so we're moving on to the consent agenda.
Be glad, please.
You're welcome to sit up.
Six seats are up front here.
There's plenty of seats up front.
We're moving on now to the consent agenda. That's resolution number 95, 96, 98, and 99. Any questions or comments from the council?
Could I request that we separate 98?
Certainly.
Thank you.
So that's resolutions number 95, 96, and 99. Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote for, or can I get a motion to pass resolutions number 95, 96, and 99 as part of the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Resolution number 98, this is a resolution authorizing the award of a fair and open contract for the studies required for the relocation of the police department to HMR Architects in an amount not to exceed $18,250. This particular resolution is to ensure that we can do just what we said we were going to do in our last meeting, which was provide the city with a comprehensive cost studies of what it would cost to sell and move the police station. This is simply the next step in ensuring that we're giving the public as much information as possible before any final decision to make. Councilwoman Lambert, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I have a concern that we keep funding this effort. Do we have an idea when we're going to be done?
Yes, we actually put together a timeline, which I presented to the council at the last meeting. And that's actually also on the website and available for everybody here at, I believe it's on our community development page.
I believe that's the page it's on. If you have problems finding it, call me and I'll direct you to.
So again, we as a council agreed towards that timeline, and we are funding this to ensure that we have as much information as possible to make a decision with actual information.
And what we've done so far, does it cut it?
Well, Councilwoman Lambert, I would argue that we have, now that we have an interest in the potential purchase of the police department, it would be good for us to know what the cost of moving the police department would be before we make a final conclusion.
I would have thought that we would know that before we committed to moving the police.
I would have enjoyed having that information as well. Unfortunately, there were members of the council who suggested that until there was actual interest in the sale of the police department, that we should no longer study whether or not we should move the police, the cost of moving the police department.
But the decision to move the police actually evolved, became fact that's true.
No, the decision to move the police department has not yet been made.
So we have a redevelopment plan before fair share works that's been approved, that's been approved by the courts on the property where the police currently resides. We are obligated to move forward with that fair share housing plan. Yet we don't have an action plan that would require moving the police.
Councilwoman, what I'm trying to do here is fund the information that we need in order to get a firm action plan so that we can discuss it with the public with all of the information to all of the members of the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to pass resolution number 98, 2021? No, this is a resolution. It's not a public hearing. I'm sorry, I'm going to ask everybody to keep their comments until our public hearing. So I appreciate that, but I'm going to ask that we maintain decorum here. Everyone will have a chance to speak at the public. Can I get a resolution, excuse me, can I get a motion to pass resolution number 98, 2021? Councilwoman Taylor for the first?
Second.
Councilwoman Lambert for the second? Can I get a roll call?
Councilwoman Lambert? Given the amount of public outcry and opposition to moving the police, I'm going to vote no.
Councilman Lambert, unfortunately, if you second to approve the motion.
I'll have to vote yes?
Yes, so I'm going to ask you to not, to rescind your motion.
I will rescind my motion. Thank you for calling me. I had no idea.
Can I get a second to pass resolution number 98, 2021?
I'll second.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call?
Councilwoman Lambert? So since there's so much public outcry in opposition to this, I feel I need to vote no.
Okay.
Councilman Sanders?
I'm going to ask that we keep the clapping to a minimum until we're done with our.
Too bad.
Excuse me.
Too bad.
Excuse me.
Too bad.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask that we all treat each other with a level of respect and decorum.
Then you follow your own advice.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask everybody to please be quiet.
You follow your own advice.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask that everybody.
Follow your own advice.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask that everybody, please calm down. Let's all treat each other with a level of respect and decorum. Thank you. Okay. I believe we're on, Councilwoman Lambert? Yeah, Councilman Sanders?
Because we need to figure out how much this is going to cost, we have not made a decision to move the police, and this is integral to understanding that. I think it's actually essential that we know the answer to this. I'm sorry, we have to spend money to learn the answer to this, but we do. As a result, we'll go yes.
Council President Taylor? Similar to Councilman Sanders, I've said consistently throughout this process that I can't make the final decision, and luckily we are not at that point yet until I have all the information. And part of that information is, is there a place to move the police station to? How much will it cost? And similarly, related but separate, we're talking about the overall site plan for the clossom property. These are, of course, separate issues, but of the same lineups, and we can't make final decisions about that until we have a site plan. So both instances, we are moving ahead to get the information that we need. For that reason, consistent with my statements throughout this process, I will vote yes.
And I forgot, Councilman Stegman? Your vote?
Oh, no.
Mayor Fall?
Yes.
Okay, next is resolution number 99. This is a resolution approving a settlement, agreement, and release with Alex Torpe. Are there any questions from the council? Oh, oh, my gosh, sorry.
Hold on. I have 95, 96, and 99 as the consent.
Oh, as the consent, okay, sorry, I lost my place in our agenda. Okay, hold on. Here we go, all right. We're going to hold our ordinances. We're holding both of these ordinances, Cindy, do you think? Yeah. We're going to hold our ordinances for ordinance number fif, our ordinance readings for ordinance number 14 and ordinance number 15. They're nonessential and not time, you know, time-sensitive. So we're going to hold on those until we can meet inside at the regularly scheduled meeting. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's on July 6th. Thank you. Okay, Councilman Sanders, can we start with you with a brief marijuana committee update?
Yeah, I actually could, sorry, but one thing on the Pennies Pipeline. Very quickly, the Pennies Pipeline Supreme Court decision should be delivered in June. So the case was argued at the end of April. If New Jersey were to prevail in that legislation, or, sorry, litigation, that appeal, the Pennies folks have said that they would not pursue the current arrangement. So there's a lot riding on this. If the Supreme Court rules in favor of the state, and the AG's office did a fantastic job on this thing, then it looks like that at least the current model of that pipeline is dead. If they should prevail in their appeal and New Jersey loses, the fight is not over. We have our, we're working with a lot of different community groups to oppose that. We will continue to do so, and they will need additional clearances from DEP and others to accomplish their goal, and that's a tough order as well. So we have, you know, we could get some very good news very soon. And if we get some bad news, it's just temporary bad news, and we continue to fight. On cannabis, I want to thank a lot of the folks I can see in the audience here. We have been undertaking, Steve and I, along with some other members of our work group, to solicit opinion and input from the public on cannabis. So we've done two public hearings, one via Zoom, one here at the Justice Complex last night. Both of them had about 30 people, a little over 30 people in attendance. And the first part of both of those was to provide some educational background on the state law, and then on what it means for the city and what decisions the city has to make. The key decision right before us that's time-sensitive, and again, I hate to move with sort of our hair on fire, but we have to do this because of the timeline, is whether the city wants to permit certain cannabis types of businesses. And there's wholesalers, and there's growers, and there's so forth. There's been a lot of interest from the public around retail, and it's probably a more realistic use in Lambertville than a big warehouse. Some of these warehouses are like football fields and so forth. So again, we've done two public hearings. There's an email address. If you haven't had the opportunity to weigh in, feel free to do it via that email. I believe it's info@lambertvillenj.org. I'll repeat that in a second in case you're getting pens out. But please weigh in if you haven't. The issues we want to hear about are, do you or do you not support Lambertville allowing certain kinds of businesses? I'd ask you to focus on retail because that's where the most interest has been. And if you do support it, what kind of constraints would you like to see? Where do you think the business should be permitted? What hours? Those are the kinds of things that the city would have to endeavor to look at. We hope to present findings to the council and to the planning board so that it could make decisions to, whichever way it's going to go here on July 6th for the city council and July 7th for the planning board. I think it's fair to say that, as I say, the most interest has been on retail options. So if you haven't weighed in, please do so. Again, if you're getting pens out or pencils, it's info@lambertvillenj.org. We are going to continue to try to get input through this process even after that because there's lots of questions involved in this. So we're hoping to get off the ground a survey very shortly that we're going to send out. We've met with business, community members, potential business owners for cannabis and micro businesses, and we have met with some youth groups who are sort of opposed to cannabis. We're trying to meet with anybody who's willing and interesting to meet to receive that input and to collect. So at this point, it's the information collection stage, but if you have an interest in this, please weigh in.
Councilman, do you mind if I ask you a couple of questions just in terms of our timing? So do you expect that we'll be seeing a cannabis, a piece of cannabis legislation in July, in our July voting session? For us?
For us, okay. So yes, so we need to do something. If we do nothing, then sort of all permitted uses are allowed. I don't know of any municipality that's going down that path. So most municipalities have stepped out and done as suggested by the league, which is to ban it. I would say a portion of those folks that are banning it are doing so for the purpose because they want to ban it. There's another group of cities that are banning it to retain that flexibility to allow them to have a little bit more time and for some, the benefit of the state rulemaking around this. I know that Angel Fuentes in Camden, Camden just came out. They're going to ban it, but they do want to allow it. Somebody else, Asbury Park just came out with a ban. But again, they too said that they're very interested in doing it. They just feel like they need more time. We are, you know, the timeframe is tight, so we're doing the best that we can. We haven't made that decision yet, but we're doing our best to see if it's something that the community would like to see, to see if we can get that off the ground.
Okay.
One quick note, the state, there is a bill in the legislature to extend the time. I don't think it's going to make, it's not going to make the light of day. But there is that very slight possibility.
Any questions from the council regarding either of these updates versus Councilman Sanders?
If I may.
Would you mind speaking up for us?
Yes, I can. The amount of people that have come out, both online and in person for this meeting, shared stories and ideas that quite frankly, if we weren't having this meeting, we would not be hearing. So I'd like to thank Councilman Sanders for really going forward in a positive way. And it's quite eye-opening, and there's been a lot of great ideas coming forward.
Okay. Councilman Stegman, while the mic's on you, would you mind giving us an update on the 100th County Economic Development Grant?
Yes. The goal of the grant is to, and we're not the only community in 100th County that's received that. Some sister communities, I believe Stockton and Frenchtown have also, and they've taken some action. Is, I look at it as a huge economic development boost where a business can come into Lambertville and have their business as an allowed use in the commercial zone, and therefore make it easier for them to open and stay open while avoiding the possible process they may have to go with to take their case, so to speak, in front of one of the boards, which can be expensive and time-consuming. So we're looking for, we have reached out for input from property owners who have commercial properties and also from business owners in the city as well that are located in the commercial business. We have a meeting, a Zoom meeting next Tuesday, where we have invited the real estate owners as well as the businesses again. And the response has been very promising with that action that we're taking. So this weekend, I'm going to be going around to businesses and handing them the information that the chamber has helped us a great deal in getting this message out as well. So we're trying our best to raise awareness of how positive the change in zoning will be to the economic vitality of Lambertville. Quite in sight.
Does anyone have any questions for Councilman Sand, excuse me, Councilman Stegman on this update? Okay. Councilwoman Lambert, would you mind giving us an update on the boards and commissions and the appointments work that you're doing?
Sure. It's, well, it's boards and commissions appointment season, I can tell you that. We're opening up very soon. And I'm working with Cindy to get a list of the openings, and there will be something in Lambertville Matters probably in the next issue next week. And, you know, we'll be working on collecting names of interested parties who are, want to be volunteering their time.
And how are you going to approach the question, I think that was one of the reasons that we asked you to work on this, which was whether or not we could appoint outside the City of Lambertville and what the board's next steps would be for deciding that?
My understanding was that we were, that there was inconsistencies across the various boards and commissions. So as I kind of go through this process for each of, you know, for all of them at the collective time, it was an opportunity to look at them, kind of lay them all out and say, you know, where are, you know, this particular organization has the requirement, this one doesn't. And I was actually thinking what I probably would need to do is maybe start with the current chairs of those organizations and having a conversation with them about, what do you think about this requirement? What do you think about that requirement? Because I don't know, I know there was conversation and input from the public that, you know, we might want to be more consistent. And that, that's a good goal, that makes sense, but it may, you know, as you get into a dive and you think about what each organization is there to accomplish, it may not be the right solution. So I kind of wanted to talk to each group independently and, you know, and then kind of report back and let you guys know what I found out.
Great, we're looking forward to the next update. We'll move on. We talked a little bit about the Green Acres grant application. I do want to take a moment here to thank Council President Taylor, who helped me write that grant. that grant, as well as Jackie Middleton, who has been a rock star volunteer and is also the, in the 100 and Land Trust, who's been helping us guide ourselves through making sure that we have as much public funding and refunding from the acquisition of that closon property. All right, a couple of quick updates here.
Wait, I'm sorry, can I make one comment and updates?
Certainly. Yeah. Go ahead.
Just one thing I wanted to note for folks, we got an incredible amount of outreach from people asking about the reopening of the market and in particular, one specific potential reopening entity. Just want to remind, well, say first of all, the city is not in conversation with any particular entity to reopen the market at that time. Anything we have, anything we would do or could do would have to be done in a public process. So we couldn't just negotiate with one entity and say, you get to open this business on city property. Two, when we voted to move ahead with the purchase of the closon property, we all took a separate vote that said, we promise not to make any decisions about the use of the property, the entire property, until there's a full site plan. So we are in the process of figuring out how we will get that site plan done. We should have for you in the next month, what all those steps will look like and what that timeline will look like. But just, you know, we got, I tried to respond to every email I get, did not respond to the 70 or so emails about the market and wanted to make a public statement here acknowledging all of that outreach and, and, you know, where we are with that.
Okay. Thank you, Council, Council President. We have been working, a couple of quick announcements. We've been working with the Chamber of Commerce. There's been some requests from businesses to have access to public restrooms in the city as particularly on weekends as traffic increases during the summer. So the city of Lambertville worked with the Chamber of Commerce to come to an agreement to open the Patori Center bathrooms on weekends for public use. We're going to be piloting that in early July to see whether or not it works. You know, we've got to work with the state court system as well as with our employees and our cleaning units. So this is a pilot trial run for open public restrooms and we will keep the public posted if we decide to make that a long-term, a long-term access.
Will there be anybody in the building?
There will not. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stay consistent here and ask you to wait till public comment to make your...
It was just in specific to opening the public restroom.
I appreciate that, but I do want to, I do want to keep all the rules the same for everybody. Okay. Sparkle Week, I want to just quickly shout out both our, both Sue and Cindy for helping put together an online permitting system for bulk trash. You know, that that was quite a heavy lift for you and I want to thank you for the time. So the bulk trash permitting is up online right now. If you want to take a look at how it works before Sparkle Week, we made some changes to Sparkle Week. Those changes will be detailed in the Lambertville Matters, which goes to every person's home, and they'll be coming out in July. The Sparkle Week pickup dates are posted on, are they posted on our website?
They are.
They're posted on our website and they will, will continue to give updates to folks and keep them on the agendas to make sure folks know. All right, now I'll ask if you have a public comment, to come up to the podium, state your name, your address, and then make your comment. I'm going to remind everybody that we're going to keep all comments to three minutes and we'll go from there.
Go ahead, Paul.
Hi, Mike Mensch, 25 Ferry Street. With the Green Acres Grant and other grants, are they applied to the debt, the bonding, or is it discretionary? How does that work?
That's a great question. So it depends, there are several grants and public, private grants that we're working on that are specifically for debt. The Green Acres Grant is a 50% match grant, so they'll take 50% of what the total that we paid in order to acquire that property. It's meant to work, it, it depends on how, what, at the timing that you get the grant, but functionally it's meant to help offset direct costs of acquisition, which would mean paying that debt. They also have other grant opportunities through Green Acres for things like stewardship, right, which is ongoing maintenance of those properties, which we would apply for separately.
Thank you. So but, so if we get 1.5 million on the Green Acres, is it still discretionary or do we have, do we have to apply it to the debt related to the closon property or is it, we can apply it any way we want?
It would have to be applied to a green, to either the debt or cost for acquisition or for the maintenance of the park area. We couldn't just use it for a general budget.
Got it. Thank you.
Hi, Paul Stevens, 39 Quarry. In the consent agenda, you passed Resolution 99 and that has to do with the settlement and release with Alex Torpey. There was $75,000, $75,000 that's being paid by the insurance company. Is that all, is that the final on the settlement? Is that some total? Is there anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Thanks.
Judy Gleason, 86 North Union Street. I actually have two small questions. One is a follow-up on Resolution 99 that we just asked. I just wondered, is that settlement going to be available for the public to see?
Yes.
And that will be available what, on our website or some...
It'll be openable as soon as the action is taken. So right now it's in draft form. The resolution had to be passed by the governing body and then it'll be available via Oprah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And my second question is having to do with the economic development activity that's going on that you spoke about, Councilman Stegman. If a business is in process of trying to open in this city and is running into extreme difficulty with all of the steps and this business I'm thinking of has been working on it for two years, would they be, would they fall into some way where they would get the benefit of this potential new thing? Do you know?
Would you mind if I sort of track that? So just so everybody can hear, it was a question about the economic development grant that we have through 100 and County and whether or not if a business was already in process, if they could take advantage of the change. As what, Mr., excuse me, Councilman Stegman is working on right now is a change in our zoning via ordinance. As soon as that ordinance is passed, it applies to all businesses, current and future. So if that, if by the time that our ordinance is fully fleshed out, it has a first reading, a second reading, and it's passed, then, and that business hasn't yet been able to open their doors, then yes, they would be able to receive the benefit of that, of those ordinance changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Irene Rudolph, 90 Clinton Street.
I applaud opening the restrooms at the Actney for public use. I, I only think that we might reconsider making them unisex. Because when I was here before COVID at a public meeting and I went to use the restroom, whoever is in the restroom locks the door. And so it effectively makes a two-stall restroom single use. And so if we redesignated, you know, ladies, men, there would be, you could, two people could use the restroom at the same time, which doesn't happen when, you know, it's open to both sexes.
Sure. So just so everybody, I'm just going to repeat here, I'm sorry, did you say your name?
Irene Rudolph.
Irene, thank you. So what Irene asked was, there's some concerns about having unisex bathrooms in the Justice Center because there are some folks who, because it's unisex, lock the opening door rather than the stall, making it functionally a one-stall bathroom instead of a two-stall bathroom. That unisex change happened prior to my mayorship.
Oh, okay.
And it was done by act, by recommendation through the, oh, I'm blanking on the name of this commission. Thank you, of the Human Rights Council. I believe that was done at the end of 2018. I'm happy to go back to the Human Rights Council and ask for their recommendation, you know, and take that into consideration.
Just because it's not a practical thing. I mean, I applaud unisex, but it really only works with single facility rooms.
Yes, Councilwoman Lambert.
Maybe we could take the lock off the door. Because you're saying that they lock the door to enter into the room and you've got two stalls and stalls close.
Right, but I think most women are reluctant to use what was once the men's bathroom with the, you know, with the urinal and, anyway, it was just a thought.
Okay, thank you so much for your comment.
Hi, I'm Sue Bao, 407 Surgeon Drive, Lambertville. I will try to speak up so everyone can hear. I just had a follow-up question on the Green Acres application. I don't know if you submitted it or not, but I'm, when, like, whatever his name is, was asking a question about the budget. You do have to give, I'm not familiar with any grants that you don't have to give a specific project budget to the penny, including where you're going to apply your match and where your match is going to come. So that's why I'm a little confused that maybe we're going to apply it to debt, maybe general, general operating expenses. So what is your proposal, because it has, the budget has to match what your proposal says.
Certainly.
So I'm just asking for a little bit of more information.
Happy to. So the match has already been spent.
Correct.
We acquired the property. So they're taking our acquisition cost as the match. And there is no wavering here. We have to spend that money on debt service or on park-related expenses. We cannot put that, that general, that money into the general operating fund. It has to be for Green Acres program. So if that was unclear, that's my fault. When we apply for this grant, it will be for the match for our green, for the green acre side of the money we've already taken. So it's a reimbursement.
Okay, right.
The grant? We'll make the grant available, but not until after we're done negotiating with Green Acres.
Okay, thank you.
Right now that's in draft form. We'll get the final, once it's final and it's going to the legislative action, which will be sometime in November, then the grant will become available to the public.
So the 1.5 you're applying for, you're just going to apply on the other half of the purchase price?
Correct.
Okay. Rather than general operating expenses or a project?
We cannot do, use it for general operating expenses.
Okay, gotcha.
Can I use questions from people commenting online?
No, people have to come, people have to come here and comment.
But if they can't make it.
I...
You're welcome to.
You're welcome to make a comment yourself.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Hi, Sue Testa, South Union Street. Number one, I try faithfully to email our council people with 99% no return. I must admit that Julia finally answered some today, but not the questions that I asked, which are very concerning. And it starts way back from last year when this big decision to move the police station started. Could somebody possibly explain, other than your little one bid to sell the land for development, so to speak, why are we considering moving the police station? Because we need to incur more expense?
Oh, we are considering moving the police station to help solve for our affordable housing required.
And that's the best you can come up with. We have one bid. We don't even know if it's competitive, but we're willing to then incur many multi-expenses to build a new police station, which nobody knows where or how. You're going to tell me that's a good idea?
We are working on, on coming up with the final solution.
Why don't we have the solution before the problem?
All I can say is that we're working on it.
No, you're not. For a whole year, you can't figure that one out? All of you, not just her, I'm yelling at, because I, you know, it's really frustrating. I'm 78 years old, lived here all my life, have paid taxes for at least seven, 60 of those years, and all you can tell me is we're barking on it? Really? How would you feel? No, I want to know. How would you feel?
I really appreciate your comments, Sue, and I...
I know. Is there anybody else that would like to know how she feels? Thank you.
I want to know. There's no sense arguing with you guys. No sense writing to you, no sense asking questions.
Lily Chen, 17 Clinton Street. So if the study determines that the cost of relocating the police station is far higher than the 1 point, or $1 million that you're selling the site for, what's next? What would you do next? I mean, what's, what, is there a plan in place or would we be meeting and discussing? I mean, how far have you thought this through?
I appreciate the question. As we discussed at our last meeting, we came up with a timeline in which we would study all of our alternative options outside of the closon site as a place for the police station. We would present each of those costs to the, to the public in full. That includes any temporary moving of the police station, the cost of the move itself, the cost of any new furniture, everything down to the penny. We'll be presenting that to the public. We will have that public discussion. Then it will come to the governing body to have that discussion about whether or not we can, any of those alternatives are appropriate, and we will take a vote at that time.
So you're saying the public, the public, all of us here, we will have some say in what the next step will be?
You will be able to observe what each of our, what each of the cost of any potential alternative site will be, and you can air any of your concerns to this governing body, which will then make a decision.
We're not, you're not going to listen to any of our concerns.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask that...
I'm just...
No, Julia, you aren't going to listen to any of our concerns.
I'm just concerned with, we have been for over a year, like more than a year, saying, don't put the police site on the overlay. And we, I, I think there was not one person in the room that said, this is a great idea, and we weren't heard. So I'm just wondering, if the price comes out to be four, $5 million, will you really hear us? Will you really hear all of us and not just the two council folks here that says yes, yes, yes?
All I can tell you is what I've said before, which is we're going to present our, we're going to study and present our options to the public and then we'll take a vote.
But you didn't answer the question.
I'm asking you, will you hear all of us?
We hear all of you all of the time. We are listening right now, we will continue to listen. We don't have the...
So then why do you vote against the majority of the people here that are asking you to say no? Why do you keep saying yes?
I cannot answer that direct question, but I will tell you that the people that are here at this moment aren't the only people in town. We hear from a lot of people and that's, that's the reality.
So you're saying a lot of people are saying, yes, please sell the police site?
We don't have the information to make the final decision. And as I said earlier in this meeting, I personally, can speak only for myself, I can't make the final decision on this issue. And we're not there yet, that vote is not before us yet. I can't make that final decision until I fully... Who makes the final decision? I can't make that final decision until I can say I'm comfortable with the costs, the plan, and what I think the outcome will be. I don't have that information yet, though I have not voted to sell the police station. I have not voted to move the police station. None of us have yet.
All right, so I'll ask this question in public because no one's answered to me an email. I sent you the data, the EMF data, that shows 69% childhood cancer increase when it's 600 feet from the site. Here it's 200 feet. Would you, anybody here, raise your family under that condition? Would you say yes, I would raise my children under that condition, knowing the data? Would you do that?
There are lots of different views on that particular set of data.
So...
Excuse me, I'm going to ask that if you have a comment, then you come and state your name and your address and follow the rules, just like everyone else.
I'm just wondering, would, I would not raise my family under that condition, knowing the data. I'm just wondering how you could think that's okay.
Lily, I appreciate your comment. We've given you more than three minutes. We've answered your comments directly. I appreciate your time.
Hello. Sean Tucker, 19 Douglas Street. I'm sure you probably don't know me. I understand you want to move the police station. What I want to know is, how does this improve our financial standing? Because to be honest with you, my property taxes went up 10% last year. Oh, and surprisingly, they went up 10% this year. What are you going to do to make sure that they don't go up another 10% next year? Or are they? Have you already planned that? So how does this, I know you say affordable housing, oh, we got to have that. We had an affordable housing plan. You spent money to study this and you spent money to study, you just voted for a bunch of money tonight? You're going to study? So, okay, so you, you're selling the police station site and then what are you going to do? The study is going to come back and tell you that it's going to cost you $4 million to build a police station. I don't care where you put it, this is the 21st century. The building they're in was built, what, in the 20th century? It's going to cost you way more than you think it's going to cost you. So I really want to know, what are you going to do for the citizens of this town, the taxpayers? The ones who have to open up those tax bills every month and wonder, wow, how long can I live here? Because I'm getting ready to retire, you know, honestly? Lambertville's kind of lost its shine. So what are you going to do? So what are you gonna do? Go ahead. How are you gonna improve our financial standing by selling the police station and spending $4 million?
Sir, I disagree with you on the premise of your question.
You don't, you think we're in good financial standing?
I allowed you to finish your statement.
Okay, go ahead.
And so I'm gonna ask you, allow me to finish my. We have no idea at this current time what the alternative, where, how, what the alternative site would be to move the police station.
Yeah, I've heard this. You're gonna do a study, which you just spent money on. So what do you, what is your backup plan? Are we gonna then rent the police station from the guy you sold it to? Because I think that's happened, what was that, Flemington? Because it was gonna cost 4 million, or did it cost $4 million to build it? And then they had to rent it. So what I'm saying is that I think you're doing this. Let's study, let's study, we gotta move it, we gotta move it, we gotta move it. You don't have a plan. And I think you're gonna get yourself into a corner and you're gonna bankrupt us. So that's my comments. I don't think you're doing a very good job. Personally, I plan everything out. If I was gonna move the police station, I would've known two years ago where I was gonna put it, what it was gonna cost, what are the regulations? You know, they deserve a really decent place. For the kind of money you're gonna spend, we could give them, we could give them a break room with gold faucets. I'm serious, we could. I, I really wonder about the future of this town and the competence of our government. And that's my comments. Yes, I have very little faith in any of you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to close public hearing? Oh, sorry, please.
Sandy Hannah, 249 South Franklin Street. Am I loud enough? Okay. Louder, okay. Just going with what was being said, it seems like it's all about that the police station is going to move. Is there a plan within the plan if you decide not to move it because of the expense? Or will that be part of what you're doing? Just a question.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
Okay, right now, everything is going about a study for how much it's gonna cost and where we're gonna move it and all this other stuff. What if you decide or you find out that it's way too expensive and it's way too crazy to even bother doing this insane idea? What, do you have the plan of what your alternative would be? Where would you put your fair housing if you do not move the police station? Is that within what?
Yes, that will be a part of what the provision is.
Is that in your scope?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little too short for the podium, sorry. So yeah, I was actually going to ask a question similar to what Sandy just asked. I'm sorry, what?
The name and address.
Oh, sorry. Gina Fischede, 116 Clinton Street. Good thing it's a nice night out, I guess. So, so yeah, my question was going to be similar to Sandy's about, you know, if the cost for moving the police station is determined to be too exorbitant, too high, what the plan is going to be. And so I'm curious to know if you are currently looking into other strategies to address the city's affordable housing obligation that's right now proposed on the police site? And, you know, further, what, what exactly will, what is too expensive? Like, I'm sure you've thought about it, right? Like, I, I would be interested to know if you're willing to tell me what, what the number is that's considered to be too much? And then further down from that, what the, what the obligation of, you know, how that will affect the city's taxes, right? Because that's what everybody's very concerned about. But then in addition, you know, are you currently looking into other ways to address these five units of unmet need that are being addressed on the police station site?
So very briefly, as a reminder to folks who have continued to cite the 2018 settlement agreement, it is not just the five units, but also the non-condemnation as a part of the agreement. Now, as a reminder for those who were not a part of the 2019 discussions, condemnation means a taking of private property for public use. The requirement of the taking of private property for public use is two assessments of the value of that property and then a full payment for the cost of that property. So the original plan included the condemnation of the high school site, which would have had some value, two assessments of that, of that particular site, and then a payment to the private landowner in a multi, by a multimillion dollar check, excuse me, allow me to finish, I allowed you to finish, payment on a multimillion dollar check to that private owner. In order for us to negotiate, to get out of the obligation for us to pay many, many millions of dollars for the old high school site, we agreed to solve for our affordable housing in a separate way, which included these five units. But it also included a larger perspective change to our affordable housing plan. So that's my first answer. It is not just that we had to solve for these five units. Gina, allow me to finish, please.
You're not answering the question, no, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, if you'll allow me to provide some context to the public, I will then answer your question. So as, yes, we are looking at alternative options of how we can solve for those five units, but it's important to note that it's not just the solving of those five units, but also the solving of non-condemnation.
Does that mean your time is up or mine is up? It's beeping.
That was not a beep from.
Oh, I'm, okay. I don't know. It was just a timer? I don't know.
Oh, it was a timer?
So am I allowed to?
You can make a final statement.
Can I, I, I just, with the whole timing thing, to me, it seems like intrinsically unfair that the people who are asking questions don't actually get three minutes, that the part of the three minutes is the council's response. Like, that just seems to me, perhaps it might be something that could be reconsidered.
That's not usually how we do it. We don't, of course, we don't have the fully, I refuse to give three minutes. But I would also state to the public that this is public comment period, not public debate period. And if people are going to consistently attack and ask for long answers, it's going to be a different kind of situation.
Okay. I didn't mean to ask for, I didn't mean to debate or attack or ask for a long answer. It was actually kind of a more simple question, I guess. But in response to what you just said, Mayor Fall, you know, it was your, your decision to not condemn the high school site. I would be very interested to know what the assessed value of that site is.
We're legally not allowed to deliver.
I know, you've told me that, but I still just wanted to say, but so.
I would love to tell you what the assessed value of that property is because it would make my life a heck of a lot easier and the argument for why it was so important for us to not.
That's why it's an important piece of information.
But I cannot give it to the public.
Okay.
We are in, in multiple active federal lawsuits with the guy who owns that property.
Okay. So anyway, I think going forward, you know, my question still stands. I think it's something that I hope that you're looking into. I, I suspect, you know, the city is not that big, there's only so many developable sites. To find a site for the police station, to find a site for affordable housing, your only work, I mean, there's not more land being created, so we, we know, we know what we're working with here, right? It shouldn't be that complicated. And just my final thing is, I would just like to know where we stand in terms of doing a hybrid version of the council meetings so that people can attend via Zoom. And I, you know, like, for example, what's going on right here? If we were still doing a hybrid Zoom option, we wouldn't be sitting in the middle of a parking lot with people in the back, totally unable to hear what's being said right now. So I would just like to know if that's still something that's being looked into? There was a $6,000 number that was given last meeting.
Yes, we are looking into it.
Great. Hopefully it happens soon.
I just wanted to respond to the, I also think it's a good idea. I don't know what the cost is, but if we were to allow Zoom, I think it's something we should, and we have a tight budget, but I do think it's a, it's a good idea. I agree with you on the three minutes. It's hard to do the timing, you know? We're trying to listen and also be timers. We don't have a big staff to do that. And to your point, you know, you're right, there, there is an amount that's gonna be too much to move this, where it doesn't make sense. And we will need alternative options if folks have ideas about that. This is complicated. There's some folks like you I know who have expertise in this area, but you know, we may be in a position where we have to go back to the port. But this was, this was set in motion by, you know, we've had a series of, of unattractive options. We haven't figured out the attractive option for fair housing yet, where we make everybody in town happy. That would be a nice, that would be a nice option, but that's, that's the challenge that we have. But if, your point is very good, which is, we need to be not flat-footed and be ready to respond. If it comes back and it's cost $10 million to move the police, that's unreasonable, right? I don't know, there's a number out there, that's unreasonable. So we need to be, we need to be ready. So, you know, your, your point is, we'll take it.
Thank you.
And I would like to add on to that, that we are actively looking at those alternatives and speaking with our, our experts, our affordable housing experts to ensure that we're not being caught flat-footed.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd assume that there's standards or regulations, what have you? Oh, sorry, Charlie's aren't at 17 Clinton Street. Is that what that meant, Steve? I would assume there's standards, regulations that exist about what has to go into or what has, what a new police station would have to be built toward to? In other words, it has to have so many square feet, it's gotta have this, it's gotta have that. Is that available to the public to look at? Is there an easy-to-understand form or document that outlines what those regulations entail?
So I appreciate you asking. The PBA has put out a sort of, so you wanna build a new police site, very easy-to-understand slide presentation. That's a particularly, it's not an objective party, but the HMR architects, which, who we hired to do the study to show us what the cost comparisons would be for alternative sites, part of that cost is total code compliance, the cost of full 100% code compliance. And they are code experts. So that's the universal fire code, the universal construction code, the state police code, security code, and all of that stuff, there really is, you know, that is, it is deep and weedy. There is no sort of one pager on it. So if you're looking for just the basics, I recommend that PBA slideshow, but you can rest assured that part of the reason that we chose HMR was because they had this code compliance as a part of the package that they are recommending, so that they really know they are experts in the field of what they need to do in order to build a compliance police station and that each of the alternatives that we'll be providing will have, will have considered all of that code.
Has HMR done this for other municipalities in New Jersey? Can you say who?
I don't have their resume in front of me. I know they did a police, they did a police station, I wanna say in Pennington, but I, I don't have, they listed a, a series of towns as a part of the RFP process that we did. We had quite a few folks who were interested, who all had New Jersey municipal experience, specific experience building municipal buildings, and HMR came out the best after that, an extremely rigorous process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the community?
I got, I got something, sorry. My name's Mike Redman. I live at 23 Perry Street and I too was very disappointed when I opened my tax bill the day before the primaries. Was disappointed, okay? We had a fair housing agreement, right? It was law. I understand your concerns about eminent domain and the costs associated with that. I understand that. We have facts and evidence. We know we've spent 1.7 million for eight and a half acres at the Clausen farm, okay? You're, you changed everything here without, quite frankly, getting your ducks in the row. I don't know how you made these decisions without identifying the variables. I don't. It, you would, it wouldn't happen in business. It couldn't happen in business. You have to have the variables. We're figuring out the variables as we go. And that's why there's this mass of frustration here. We've been kicking the can down the road at every Zoom meeting. We all know this. The people kind of voted in the last council election. And this is your party, but it's your job to lead this town and you're gonna be judged by it. And we really need to start being smart. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Any other questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, can I get a motion to close public hearing? Oh, I actually, we just need a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. Thank you all for allowing us to get a little creative tonight, for spending your time with us, I appreciate it. And I look forward to hearing from you. Sue?